Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I'd like to call this first meeting of the Board of Education in 2008 to order. And with that, Mrs. Carpenter, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ashley?
Here.
Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Here.
And we have all members present tonight to conduct our business. And our first order is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Dr. All, would you please introduce our special guest for the pledge?
Yes, would our two student representatives from Santa Fe Trail Junior High please come forward? And these two young ladies are at Santa Fe Trail. They're going to lead us in the pledge, and then I'll give you a little information about each of them. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, girls, come over here. First of all, I'm going to introduce Victoria, and this is Victoria Harwell. And Victoria is a ninth grader at SFT who moved here from Texas. And she is Vice President of the K's Club, which is a community and school service club that we have in each of our schools. She's on the Santa Fe Trail honor roll. And she plans to attend Alethe Northwest next fall. Is that correct? Okay. And do you have any family members here?
Yep, my mom.
Would you introduce your mom and have her stand?
That's my mom, Ms. Reduffel.
And then Rebecca? Okay, you want to come over here a little closer to me? Okay. Rebecca Renteria? Is that correct?
Renteria.
Renteria. Renteria. Rebecca's an eighth grader at Santa Fe Trail, and she attended Ridgeview Elementary School. And she's a member of the drill team at Santa Fe Trail, the president of K's Club, the service club, and she also participates in the drama program. She's a member of the local swim team in Alethe, and she's on Santa Fe Trail's honor roll as well. So do you have family members here?
Yes, that is my mom, Christine Countryman.
And then what? Do you have a school principal here?
Ms. Lane.
We'd like to congratulate both of you girls on being so successful in your academics and your participation in school activities and community activities. We appreciate that, and we're proud of you. And thank you for making the time and effort to be here tonight and for your parents to bring you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. We appreciate you being here tonight. Dr. All, would you please give an overview of our meeting before we begin the business items?
Yes, we're going to begin the evening with several presentations. The first one will be a presentation by myself and John Hutchison on the planning for grade level reconfiguration. Following that presentation, there will be some follow-up discussion on potential ninth grade program options by Dr. Banikowski and a report back on some additional sales tax discussion. Following a comfort break, we will have recognitions and awards at about 6:45. And there will be a variety of staff and students that will be recognized for their excellence. At or about 7:00 PM, we will entertain public comments. And then, following public comments, the board will proceed with their agenda, first with the consent agenda, which are items that represent matters the board may approve without detailed discussion. All items have had prior information to the board members, but any board member and the superintendent may ask for any item to be handled separately going forward. There are also action on bids, contracts, and agreements that the district is involved with. And then some specific action items include the bond resolutions for the first issuance of funds for the first phase of our 2007 bond implementation, some continued discussion on full-day kindergarten, although that may, action on that may be delayed until February. And then the naming of elementary school number 34. The numbers keep getting bigger. Future action items, there'll be a variety of topics there that the board has received information on that they may have to take action on at a later point. And the president of the board will identify those at that time, along with some additional written information. At the end of the meeting, there will be a study session on board goals and processes. The first part of that study session occurred at the December board meeting. And this will give the opportunity of the board to identify some priorities and begin some action planning. And Dr. Bev Graham will facilitate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. All. We're in item 2 dot 01, related to information and presentations on grade level reconfiguration plan. And, Dr. All, I assume you're going to make that presentation from the standard to our left?
Yes, thank you. Want to thank you for the opportunity to provide some information related to the reconfiguration of schools. Part of the focus of this presentation tonight is to outline the plan for communication and education to our patrons about the next steps to follow the board's direction to reconfigure the grade levels in Alethe. This is a continued step in our process to invest in the Alethe school district and its excellence. First of all, I wanted to just briefly recap how did we get here? The board established a bond task force in March 2005. There were approximately 90-plus members of that task force made up of community representatives, teachers, district staff, leaders, principals, and others. And that board, that bond task force, did present their findings to the Board of Education in August of 2005. And in those findings, the task force identified, obviously, the growth needs of the district, our needs for equity and functionality of existing facilities. They identified technology needs particularly related to infrastructure and equity across all classrooms. And they also had a finding for the reconfiguration of schools to promote and enhance the academic opportunities for Alethe's students. The board continued to study all of those issues from August 2005 until they took action in May of 2007. And at that time, the board took two separate actions. One was to identify a bond package of $138 million to deal with growth, existing facilities, deferred maintenance, as well as technology equity. At that same time, the board determined that we would go forward with the reconfiguration of schools, but made it very clear at that time that it would not be included in the bond package in 2007. In that board direction that night, it was asked of the superintendent to come back to the board with a plan for moving forward. And that's what I'm doing tonight. The first question I think we need to ask in Alethe is why should Alethe consider a change? We're a good school district. Many people think we're a great school district. We pride ourselves in quality, excellence. Our guiding principles promote this. Our continuous improvement efforts are known both locally, regionally, and nationally. We often talk about the Alethe Way. And the Alethe Way, we think, sometimes mocked, but mostly praised, the Alethe Way is about those guiding principles and how we do things in Alethe to promote that excellence and quality and do it in a way that I think is personalized to high morale of our staff members, personalized to a commitment to meeting individual student needs. The Alethe Way is about that quality and excellence. And I think in order to fully implement the Alethe Way about quality and excellence and to be world-class, Alethe must examine what we have, evaluate what we have, benchmark against others who are also striving to be world-class, and try to determine the best course for the future of this school district. That's what it means to be the Alethe Way. Why change? Continued, Alethe is unlike many, many other districts in the state of Kansas and in the metropolitan area. Our growth has been steady and continuous for 41 past years. People got tired of me saying that through the bond presentations to pass the past bond election. But that growth will continue for at least another 25 to 30 years. And this school district will reach nearly 40,000 students. Now, for those of us who came in the late '70s when there were about 8,000 students, 9,000 students, this is pretty amazing. But we're going to reach 40,000 students. And why that's important is that whatever system this school district maintains, whether it's the current one or a different one, that system is going to continue to educate more and more of this community's children for many, many years. And the benefits, or the lack of benefits for those students, the costs associated with that are going to be very important to this community. That's why this is also an important issue to continue to take a look at. So whatever system we have in place, it must be the system that benefits all students. And it must be cost-effective to maintain, because we've been discussing about priority of resources, and we're never going to have all the resources we would desire. So we're going to have to look very carefully at the resources we have and maybe able to garner from the community and use them as efficiently as we can. And we've been recognized for this already in the past by Standard and Poor's and other external entities, that we try to be efficient. That's one of our values. But we're going to have to look at our systems very carefully. How will school change benefits students? In Alethe, we try to say children are first. And that, we would try not to propose anything that would not be in the best interest of students. And I can tell you, whether that's the superintendent, the Board of Education, our school principals, our teacher leaders, and our support staff, it's about what's important for students. And I know from working with parents here for 30 years that parents expect us to take care of students first. So let's talk a little bit about those academic benefits. We know that we're asking this reconfiguration to move grade nine to the high school. What's that going to do in a nutshell? I'm not going to go through past presentations. We spent a lot of months talking about these benefits. But there is going to be 100% access to 54 more electives. We're going to double the number of opportunities of Alethe's students to take courses in international languages, math and sciences, career technical education, and other opportunities that currently cannot be provided in the ninth-grade model in a junior high school across eight different centers, send to me nine. It takes the ceiling off of our top students in access to advanced courses equitably across all of our freshmen. It provides onsite access to 19 athletic programs and 15 more clubs and organizations. And we know connectedness of students is important. But you're also going to hear a little bit later in the presentation that the costs associated right now transporting our freshmen to the high school in order for them to participate in the high school programs for which they are eligible and very involved. We're going to have all students and staff focused on the importance of high school courses, transcript, and planning for post-secondary. That sounds kind of soft, but the importance here cannot be underestimated when the counselors at the high school are working with freshmen and sophomores and juniors and seniors to prepare them for the kinds of expectations to take that next step after their senior year in high school. So both the career planning and the college planning are important and inclusive when they're there. It aligns our curriculum and provides consistent state assessment opportunities and flexibilities for Alethe kids that we don't have, which the 912 high schools across the state do. And it includes all our freshman faculty with other high school faculty. We talk about this for curriculum coordination. We talk about vertical alignment, which is one of our education terms. But this is about high school faculty being able to work together in the language arts department, the math department, the science department, to prepare students in a seamless way through those four years of high school. These are some of the benefits. Right now, our freshman faculty are divided across eight school sites, separated from the four high schools. How will this school change benefit our students at the sixth grade? First of all, we've talked about this in the past. It will improve math and science for all sixth graders, not just some, including access to science labs rather than science kits. And the math and science focus in this nation has to begin much earlier than worrying about it junior, seniors, and high school or to higher education. That math and science focus is important. The core teachers at sixth grade would be working with students who have a greater depth of knowledge as teachers in a specified content area. The span of knowledge, the depth of content that's facing our sixth-grade curriculum is deepening and broadening. And although we departmentalize in some of our sixth-grade programs and try to work around that so that maybe we have a teacher that can focus more on math or we have a teacher that can focus more on science, we still have the challenges of trying to do that in 32 sites spread out across the district. Students with special needs benefit by having daily classes in a six, seven, eight model. They're not pulled out of their regular classes. Right now, at the elementary school, students are pulled out of a regular class to get special attention, come back into that regular class with an effort to try to catch up. That gets more and more important. It's always important. It gets more and more important as children move into adolescence in terms of feeling the same or different. It provides an environment at six, seven, eight, not a junior high environment, because ninth graders are no longer there. We're talking about an upper elementary school environment where the staff are focused on the developmental needs of early adolescents, continuing to serve the needs in a protected fashion, including more opportunities, though, for electives and activities for those kids who are age 12, 13, and 14 years old that are age-appropriate, not trying to be a junior high school, trying to be a school that takes care of best those children in that age range. There are additional benefits to what we're talking about in this change. Obviously, it will relieve overcrowding at the elementary schools. But it is not the only solution to that. But it is a significant one, because it would not only relieve that overcrowding by taking out one grade level, therefore making our elementary school size smaller. And our elementary school sizes, in many cases, are quite large. It will reduce the need for boundary changes, not eliminate boundary changes in this district, but reduce the need for them, because solutions at an elementary level that you hear later would require more adjustments in order to deal with the elementary capacity. This also may create, and this has not been costed out, an opportunity to address high school entrance issues of safety while we're working on renovations at the high school, that we can look at the entrances while we're at each high school and see if we can enhance safety. We're doing that at every junior high. We're doing that at every elementary school. The high schools are a little more challenging. So it gives us that opportunity. At this point, I want to talk about what are the financial benefits? Talk about the academic benefits for our students. What are the financial benefits for making this change in Alethe? Because we'll be asking the voters for a lot of money. But what are the financial benefits? Because there are financial benefits to this change, to the system change in Alethe. And I've asked John Hutchison, who is Director of Business, to provide this part of the presentation for you. And the reason I have done that is that I've asked John to take some of the data from last year that Dr. Banikowski and staff provided to the board about what it would cost to provide some of these programs, like pre-algebra at our elementary schools, and some of the other opportunities from the high school at each of our eight junior highs. So some of that data was pieced out, but we never packaged it together to see what would be the full impact of that. And then, secondly, ask him, in working with Dr. Banikowski and others, to determine from a staffing point of view, were there any efficiencies to be gained by moving sixth graders into a six, seven, eight, and our freshmen out of a sort of upper elementary model, seventh and eighth, and a high school model in ninth grade to the high school in terms of all of those electives? Are we gaining any efficiencies that would actually translate into real cost savings? And he's put together some information that I think is interesting in the way it's provided, and I think very helpful in getting a handle on what this system change would mean in a very financially responsible way. So, John, you want to come forward?
Good evening. As Dr. All said, you've seen all of this information before. It's just assembled more in a, I guess, economic set of glasses to try and determine, are there any efficiencies to be gained? And one might say, well, why do you look at efficiencies in an academic model? Really, economics kind of applies to everything. And it's simple economy of scales. If you try to provide services to sixth graders in 32 sites, it's going to be more efficient to do that in eight sites. For ninth graders, it's more efficient to do in four sites versus eight. And you'll sort of see that, that will come true as we start to analyze the data here. But as soon as I started looking at the data, I realized that there are definitely operating efficiencies. And the first financial reality that I came to see is that there are cost savings, legitimate, hard-dollar cost savings in moving to a six, nine model. And they come in a variety of categories, as I said before, that you've seen. The first is in the ninth-grade level regarding transportation cost. Currently, we transport students to senior high level for academic enrichment programs, and we transport them for athletic and activity programs. And as you can see, that's $84,000 and $65,000. One of the more significant savings that could occur is sixth- and ninth-grade core teaching. And I want to stop right there before somebody thinks I'm talking about a reduction in staff. Fortunately, we are very much a growing district. And what this would equate to is in the spring and summer, when we're in the heat of our hiring process, we would be able to hire less. We would not be looking at a reduction in force. This is the equivalent of roughly 12 full-time equivalent positions. Elementary itinerant teacher and support staff, the traveling art teachers, music teachers, counselors at the elementary level, there would be a savings of approximately $250,000. Elementary administrative support, that is principally at the administrative intern level, approximately $133,000. And finally, at the sixth-grade pre-algebra staffing, because those services would be available at the middle level. If you tally that up, that's an actual annual cost savings of $1.2 million that recurs every year throughout those 25 years of growth that Dr. All mentioned. So as you can see, it climbs to $100 million very quickly over that life. Another reality that came to light was that there is also cost avoidance in this model. And cost avoidance, the way to get your arms around what I mean by that is really, rather than trying to bring services to the students, it's bringing students to the services. There's an actual cost if we tried to implement everything available in our middle schools for sixth graders and everything that's available in our senior highs for ninth graders. If we tried to duplicate that at the representative levels where they're at right now, there are costs associated with that. If we tried to provide at the sixth-grade level advanced math, international language, physical education, you can quickly see that's nearly $1.2 million in this group alone. You don't see science there. There are many other subject areas that I didn't even quantify out yet. At the ninth-grade level, in order to provide advanced math in our current configuration, would be $180,000. To offer grade, ninth-grade electives similar to a high school setting would be over $350,000. And to provide counseling services would be $110,000. Band and orchestra for the sixth and ninth level would be $177. And sixth and ninth-grade activities would be additional $210,000. So on an annual basis, if we were to try and provide those services to students where they're at now, it would cost us an additional $2.2 million. So moving to the six, nine model avoids that cost. So the true financial reality is that the six, nine configuration brings that academic equity and opportunity to all the students of Alethe District more efficiently than our current model. To provide our students the same opportunities under that current configuration would require us coming up with an additional $3.5 million annually. There are not only operating efficiencies, but there are also capital and facility efficiency issues. The critical issue in this area is that we face an elementary space need. And I know that's been reported to you before. But that's the most critical issue facing this district right now with capital and facilities. And I analyzed two alternatives to providing relief to that. The first is what we're titling a reconfiguration bond of $60 to $65 million. What that bond would do would provide funding to relieve the overcrowding at the elementaries by allowing us to implement the six, nine configuration and its related operating efficiencies. It would provide appropriate space in the high schools, not only for the ninth graders, but there would be additional space development in those renovations that would go to serve identified instructional space needs that we currently have. And it creates an opportunity to efficiently address the safe high school entrances that Dr. All alluded to. If we're already in the building, obviously, that becomes a much more efficient process to develop those. Another alternative that was analyzed was a non-reconfiguration bond issue. Leave everything the way it is. And that would require up to $41 million. And what would be done there, rather than adding four additions to the high schools, as would be done in the previous model, here you would go through the elementaries and where needed, add-on to handle the overcrowding situation. It would relieve the overcrowding at the elementary, but it does not address other space needs at the high school, including the safe entrances. It does not provide operating cost savings or avoidance, and does not allow for six, nine academic benefits that were cited. And quite honestly, it would require additional boundary changes if you're touching that many elementary schools. One other interesting aspect that I determined in this efficiency is payback period. Now, payback periods are a little unusual to talk about when you're talking about capital and bond issues unless it's something, some of our initiatives in the energy savings or retrofitting in a building. But normally, growth comes, you build a building, and you really don't talk about the tax base being, providing a payback period. Or you have to replace an old school, you still don't talk about payback. But in this situation, there is really a payback period. And the additional $19 million to do the four renovations at the high schools versus that $41 million model to touch all the elementaries pays itself back in approximately 10 years. And actually, the entire issue of $60 to $65 million has a payback period in itself. Because the reductions and the avoidance in costs, we actually benefit from those, and they go to offset the cost of the bonds. That's a unique situation and doesn't normally come up in the school environment. At this point, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. All.
If you have any questions right now, John, we could take a few, or I could continue, and then you could think about the questions at the end. Ready for us to just keep moving forward? Okay. Glad to do that. Next question. Lots of questions tonight. When would this be placed before the voters? Well, that depends on when the board would like to see this change implemented. If the change were to be implemented by 2011, that would be the earliest date now, then probably no later than the November 2008 general election or that opening date to occur, to have the change take place. If the board desires a later opening date, such as 2012, or determines for some other reason that that needs to happen, then an election could be held in 2009. So you can just sort of play with the years there in terms of the timing of when we would need an election. Big question, what happens if the ballot question does not pass? And I think this is a question we need to, you know, take a serious, open look at. I think the important message here to patrons and that I would say in our discussions for now over two years is we would have to consider that different bond package that John talked about that focuses then our strategy for our system in investing in larger elementary schools, additional additions, possibly back, what we call backfilling in a couple of elementary schools, maybe in key areas that might require some boundary adjustments. And we talked about those elementary space solutions a year ago. We'd have to come back and revisit that. It could possibly then need the fifth high school in that next bond, because without the renovations at the high school, it needs to stay on a pretty tight schedule. And it would probably need to open then in 2012, and then we need to include that in the bond package. If we're able to do the renovations at the high school, I think in talking with others, we may, and this is why we need some further definition, which I'll say in a minute, we may be able to delay that fifth high school a couple more years, which I think any kind of delay on that high school is positive for this community, because it allows for the community, particularly in the west and the north part of the district, to fill in a little bit more.
Dr. All, do you recall the rough estimate of the cost of that new high school? Start hooting, maybe?
Similar high schools recently, some of the communities in the metropolitan area have started on new high schools, Liberty, Blue Valley. The current cost for a high school is around $60 million. That's what-
I was just looking for that ballpark.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what other districts-
That's what I thought it was, but you, I wanted to affirm it.
Yeah. And I think we maybe had that number in some of our, our projections before, and, and again, that's a ballpark number.
But that's not, obviously not part of the forty-one million-
It's not part of the forty-one million.
Bond package.
And, and it depends on how you would want to structure out that bond and how many times. John told me a scary thing. Where he came from in St. Louis, they do a bond every year. I don't want to go there.
Dr. All?
Yes.
Could you go back to the slide that says what happens if the ballot question does not pass?
Please. Pardon?
It's open.
I'm sorry, that's right. Thank you. What? Right there. If it doesn't pass in two thousand and eight, then, first of all, I think the board would need to analyze, you know, what happened, okay, if it doesn't pass. And that may determine a direction right there. But I think what's an important message here, if it doesn't pass, if you're the average voter out there, and you think, well, I'm not going to spend this money, it still doesn't then leave us without a plan, it leaves us without a plan for elementary. We've got to come back with something.
But I think there's another piece that's been left off also. And if I'm hearing John correctly, you talked about a cost avoidance. That's not built in here if we're talking about-
Oh, no.
-three-point-five million dollars a year, because we are not providing the academic, the counselors, the educational concerns of our students. I think that's a piece that needs to be added. That's because right now, we're talking about buildings and we're talking about space.
Right.
But earlier, in your presentation, we also talked about three-point-five million dollars a year, that if we're providing equitable education to our students in remaining in this, then that needs to be added to that.
The, there would not be the benefit, if this does not pass, of, of probably a million and a quarter of actual cost savings, okay? Then the other part of that, to get to the three and a half million, is if you were going to try to bring a portion or all of the services that we outlined, which weren't the complete. So, you know, that's making that assumption that you followed our model, okay?
Right.
And so there's some, some variation there. The, the model John gave was a conservative one.
Yeah, I was going to make the comment that you were dealing with operating costs, John, but if we tried to apply all those services at those elementary and junior high level, we would have additional space issues in addition to the issues we already have.
We, we didn't even go there on what-
Yeah.
-those challenges would be. The, the other piece is that this is just based on the current enrollment and current number of schools. We build about one school a year, and we're going to forty thousand kids. So we didn't even try to put this out in a line graph of, of a projection. I kind of wanted that, but we didn't quite get there. And so, like, if you stayed, if you stayed with our current configuration, what would it cost us? And if you changed, could we more effectively and efficiently deliver educational services? And I think what is, is compelling to me, and I realize it's not compelling to everybody, but what's compelling to me is that all of these educational opportunities are housed right here in Alatha. They're down the street at the high school, or they're down the street at the middle-level school. They're right here, and we can access them in a cost-effective way and give those experiences to our kids that are currently are not getting them. Okay, what's included in the communication education plan for the patrons? The board asked that I bring this back, and I have identified the key steps that I think are important in going forward, that I think I need the support of the board on in going forward as we move ahead. First of all, we need to have developed preliminary high school drawings to identify the appropriate spaces at each high school. This is important for several reasons. One, we need to further define those costs and to make sure that what, when we finalize the bond package, at whatever point that we do that, that we have a pretty good idea what we're talking about here, because each high school would have a unique solution, okay, based on its needs. Secondly, you know, we, we did this when we talked about Twenty-First Century Programs. We had to go out and talk about funding for that and talk about building programs that people, that weren't in existence. And people need help to see that which is unseen. And this would help us in the communication. It would help our staff and parents and students see how you could bring in additional students and still address the infrastructure needs of the school. As an example, at Alatha North, you know, the commons is not adequate now. This would be an opportunity as part of the solution to address the commons for Alatha North, to address the additional students, to round out that high school along with other instructional spaces that would be designed. The commons is not the issue at Alatha East, but it may be the performing arts area. So each high school would have its unique set of solutions that would also make that high school actually better, I think, for all kids, not just to add more kids to the high school. That's important. Secondly, launching an information video for use to be ready for the spring site council. I think this is such a comprehensive change, significant in this community. It's a change. It is not an innovation, because we're just doing what most peo, other people are already doing. It's not an innovation, but it is a significant change in the school district. And change comes with lots of questions, concerns, depending on how it touches each individual people. And so we're going to need lots of communication tools to reach every aspect of the community. So the information video would be part of that. We would have our print and web information and frequently asked questions, we know how to do them. We would schedule presentations at our usual site councils, parent teacher organizations, and community groups throughout spring and fall. We would host meetings with impacted staff and su, including our sixth and ninth grade teachers, because they're the most impacted by this, and our athletic and performing arts staff. And we would communicate with our teacher leaders in a variety of venues, from Alatha NEA representatives, department chairs, and others. We would host community meetings, and we would develop a professional survey for parents and voters in late spring after additional education, not now, but after additional education, to determine the clarity of our messages and where we might determine that there's additional need for education. In addition to the benefits, you know, there are issues to address and communicate. One of them is our high school size will be larger than we've ever had it before. And sometimes size of school becomes a, a topic that's addressed. But size of school is more than bricks and mortars and how many people are in that school. How people are organized, how our students are involved, how they're connected. All the other programs, connections, transitions, organization, small learning communities that are put together like our Twenty-First Century Programs and others, are all ways that you make a larger school personalized and connected. The other thing that I think's important here on high school size is we talk about that, those renovations will be designed for appropriate learning spaces. We're not just adding a wing, putting more kids in the school, and walking away from it. We're talking about appropriately designed learning spaces for all the students who attend there. And the freshman personalization. And you've heard discussions from the design teams and for staff and our principals about what we can do in transitions and working with freshmen or sophomores or whatever the new class is, or sixth graders or seventh graders, whoever that new class is, and do that in a way that feels safe and protected and exciting for all students. Are the students ready? This is another concern at times, you know, are the, are the freshmen ready for high school? Are the sixth graders ready for a six, seven, eight program? Almost all public and private high schools are nine-twelve. I don't know of one that's not nine-twelve in the metropolitan area. If they're different, they're usually seven-twelve right now. So nine-twelve is by far, there are very few ten-twelve high schools left in Kansas, very few. K-five is the most common elementary configuration, but there are a variety of elementary configurations. There's K-eight, where those sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are in the school of a K-eight school in some typically smaller communities where facilities are an issue. K-five, K-six, you'll see a five-six program. Part of this is determined by historically in those school districts, how their facilities developed and how their programs developed and where their resources are. So there's no perfect way to organize students. What we have to look at is what is Alatha doing and what's the most effective way that Alatha can organize their school district for Alatha needs? We are not Kansas City, Missouri. We are not a rural school district. We need to be organized the way to deliver the services to our students that are available in the best way possible. Alatha's plan, the Alatha Way, would address social and emotional needs of our kids, because we wouldn't do it any other way. How will the Alatha Way make this change a successful experience for all students? Well, we go back to what's part of the success here. Besides great students and great parents, the change process in and of itself would be led by our outstanding teachers. It would be led by our outstanding principals. It would be led by district leaders and support staff that work in all aspects of this organization. We are known for implementing exemplary models. We wouldn't do this in any other way except to do it the best we know how and have had experience with. We would want to ensure that parent involvement and access, those age-appropriate activities, those student connections to peers and staff, the student academic support services, and to ensure a smooth transition as we go through this process. How will our staff be impacted? That's another question. And that's an important question, and I feel like I need to spend more personal time with our staff members that are going to be impacted by this. Faculty and support staff are critical to the education of our children. We've heard that over and over and over again. The teacher and the student interaction in the classroom is the most important thing that happens in a child's education. And all the rest of us are just there to make that happen in the best possible way we can. So as superintendent, you know, I plan to meet with those interested staff members in, particularly in those critical areas. I intend to address all faculties, but I want to spend some additional time with sixth and ninth grade teachers, including also coaches and performing arts teachers that are most impacted by these changes, because they have more questions than other levels, and they should have more questions about what's going to happen to them, what does that look like? And my personal commitment is to make sure that we handle this not only according to our policies and any adjustment in policies, but that we handle this as individualized and personalized with our staff as we possibly can to make that smooth transition for that staff, just like we would expect that true smooth transition for our students. When will board action be needed? Another question. If the board decides to place the issue on the November two thousand and eight ballot, giving that as an example, then we would ask you to take action this spring, to place it on the ballot later this spring. My intent would be to start education on this topic right away. So board support on our next step for the superintendent to initiate public communication and education plan. Board action to place on the ballot. Obviously, we'd need to do some work to finalize the bond package before we place it on the ballot, and so there's some details that, that we would work out. But our entire focus here would be that continuous improvement of this school district, this very good, great school district, is that continued investments, investment in excellence. So I'll stop here and take questions. I've got John, I've got Allison, and others here, if there's some specifics that you'd like to surface.
Thank you, Dr. All. That's a wonderful presentation. Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. Pollan?
I think you probably said it, but if reconfiguration goes ahead, how long do we think it would be before that fifth high school would be required?
I think we could postpone that at least till two thousand and fourteen. I'd like to push it out a little bit farther than that, but, you know, and you think, well, what's the difference of a two-year window? Well, when you're, you're, when you're doing all these various initiatives, you know, in this district where in the last three years, we've grown three thousand kids in three years, two years, every year that we go forward, I, I think is helpful and, and to reduce the time when that change needs to occur and hopefully maybe minimize some of the changes. There's a lot of factors there, so I don't know if I'd be around in two thousand and fourteen for you to hold me accountable for that, Mike, but somebody probably would be talking to me about that.
And Dr. All, great presentation. A lot of, well-thought-out effort went into this. As I've looked at the various dates that we have to potentially put this on the ballot, I think that November of two thousand and eight seems to make the most sense. So I, I support that. I think it would be a good discussion, though, just to hear your thoughts and the staff's thoughts as to why that versus August, if there are any. I mean, I do think November makes the most sense. So that's point number one. And then the other point is I think it's appropriate to come up with some key timing milestones, so we as a board can keep those in front of us, particularly when is it we need to take that formal action-
Right.
-on putting that on the ballot. And then making sure that the communication plan stays out in front of us as a board, so we can be a part of that and understand exactly when the key communication dates are and things of that nature.
I think that we can definitely do all of that. I can, based on continued board questions, bring back additional information in February at the board meeting for you. Tell me your first question, because it was in my head and it just slipped away.
Well, the November timing.
Oh, this is about the-
And it's not a, a question, because I believe that makes sense, but just to talk a little bit about what, what led that decision.
I, I would say that would be, I would concur that, that that's the best date. I don't know that there's a good date for this election, or if there's ever a good date. There's a primary date, which is the next official regular election. Those primaries in early August, I think, is not giving our parents many times who are on vacations and others, really a true opportunity to have a voice. So I think that's not a good timing there. That would be my biggest issue. I think we'll get many, many more participants at the November twenty, the November ballot. We can't do a mail ballot in the fall, because you can't have a mail ballot sixty days on either side of an election. So you can see, it really limits your options. If you said, well, let's do it earlier, I'd say, I don't think, that maybe makes me, my heart beat fast. If we were to come back, you know, in two thousand and nine, that's, that's, that just opens up a new set of issues that would be similar to the two thousand and seven year, where you don't have very many opportunities for scheduled election, more likely could do a mail-in ballot at some point, but it does put off the vote, and it does put off us knowing where we're going in the future in our opening. And so, again, I don't know that November two thousand and eight is great, but I think it's a good opportunity, and I think that gives us some time to move forward. You know, there are going to be a lot of issues on the ballot in two thousand and eight in November. And I, I hope for our community this does not get buried in those issues. That's why I think that this communication needs to start now in the spring, particularly with our parents and, and staff and, and other related community members, so that we're ahead of all the bombardment that's going to come after September in people's homes. I think we have a foundation to build on from the work that's been done before. We probably have some additional listening to do to people and, but I, I do think the two thousand and eight timeframe in November is probably the best. But I'm open to additional board thought on that.
I think it's also key to note that this is a type of decision that has a lot of key ramifications and a lot of planning is at bay, so to speak, pending the outcome of this. So in my mind, it's something that needs to be done much sooner rather than later, so I would not be in favor of a later vote on that. I think we continue to hear that from the community as well, saying, you know, let's, let's get this thing decided, and let's move on and-
Right.
-and allow ourselves to plan for what the, the future's going to look like in the district.
I would agree with that. Thank you.
I'm in all in favor of everything that you discussed tonight, and the earlier the better. And I was just sitting here thinking that November the eighth presidential election, there will be a lot of things on the ballot, but we, we should have a good turnout. And I think that gives the community the opportunity to, plenty of time for us to, to give them the information that they need to make an informed decision, as well as have a, have a, hopefully have a good percentage of the community come out and make a decision on this.
I also think those October conferences, you know, our, our classroom teachers are wonderful communicators with our parents, and that opportunity, that personal opportunity to talk with them about certainly progress of their children, but that's also an opportunity for parents, at least of those who attending, are attending our schools, to ask questions in a comfortable environment. So that may provide additional communication for our parents.
All right. Thank you all very much for your comments and your questions. Dr. All, and John, thank you for that great presentation. Next item under presentations is potential grade-nine programs. And I believe Dr. Banikowski is going to introduce this topic, and then we'll have some discussion.
You have in your packet a written report, and I'm going to just simply give a little bit of an overview to that written report and provide mostly opportunity for you to provide some discussion. As you requested in December at the board meeting, we provided you at that time in December a chart that indicated some of the options that might be available should you choose. a chart that indicated some of the options that might be available should you choose to have a ninth-grade program where ninth graders could go to the high school during the 2008-2009 school year. And at that time, you indicated that there were three programs you'd like to have a further analysis of, more information on, and that was options numbers two, three, and eight. At that time additionally, as we pulled together, I pulled together an analysis committee. We also determined we would look at option number one, because it was so similar to option two and eight, that we thought we'd look at it at the very same time. So in your report, you see the information on who the analysis committee was, as well as who we obtained input from. You had some information on the parameters that we were trying to achieve, such as making sure that we worked with Kansas State High School Activities Association and some of their guidelines, making sure we were being cost-effective, looking at teacher licensure. You can see that we articulated for you the purpose of the analysis committee. We felt we needed a purpose to guide our work as we were working. You see information on a projection model, since we aren't, we're not dealing with actual data, since students, we had not had anyone actually enrolled, we had to look at a projection model, so we gave you some information on our projection model that we used. In this case, for staffing, for example, we looked at the number of section needed for different coursework and the various options. We provided for you the figure that we used as our multiplier, if you will. We also took a look at the fact of what, that none of these projections took into consideration growth. We dealt with a slice in time of a number of students and transportation. We also listed for you all the assumptions that we built our projection model on, so that you would have a clarity of knowing what we were thinking as we put together our information on the various options, such things as, you know, we would need to provide some coursework that we knew of for sure, we would need to provide Language Arts I and pre-AP Language Arts I. We knew we had to do that, so that became an assumption that helped guide information on the sections we would need. So you can see all the assumptions that we listed there. Then we came to the actual options that we were studying or analyzing further for you, and that was one, two, three, and eight. And let me just recap briefly what those are. Number one was where we indicated that students, ninth-grade students were involved in the enhancement program, where we have some ninth graders, a few ninth graders going up actually to the high school currently, and that they would be offered the option or the choice to be able to take their entire high school career at the four high schools in our community, and we provided that information. With numbers, a two option was to accept a limited number of freshmen to attend certain our identified 21st century high school programs, provided information on that. The third option was a choice where Prairie Trail ninth-grade students and their families could select to take their freshman year at Prairie Trail or at Olathe Northwest, and we provided information on that. And then number eight was all four high schools taking a limited number of students for their freshman year at the high school based on the space availability at those particular high schools. For each one of those options, we told you what data we looked at to make our analysis. We talked again about whether there are any additional assumptions for each of the four options, and there were some different assumptions based on the different options that we looked at. We provided you the number of students per site we thought we could handle based on the information that we had and that we had collected, and again, that differs depending on which option you're looking at. And again, then we also indicated the advantages of the option, as well as the disadvantages of the option, so from our analysis point of view. Then the final thing we provided you for all four of the options was the cost implications. We tried to give you, based on the number of sections, based on the number of students that we put in our assumption model, what that would cost for obtaining staff, and in some cases, the cost would be additions, because if we were taking a limited number of students, we would not be taking ninth-grade staff to do that, they would be remaining at the junior high, whereas in some of the options, if we were taking a larger group of students, we would have the opportunity to take some of our, have some of our ninth-grade teachers actually accompany those students and teach those students at the high school setting, and as well as we put in some additional costs that might be for transportation costs in our assumption model that we built. So again, we provide you all four of those options and analysis with the disadvantages and advantages, cost implications of the four options that you asked us to take a little closer look at. And so with that, brief recap of that, it really is a pared-down, could have been, could have been longer, but that ninth-page analysis that we provided you on those options. And the font wasn't even size six. Questions that you might have, specific questions? I do have a, I believe, I see a couple of folks that were on the analysis committee here, Mr. Clark and Dr. Poss are here, and Ms. Yurkovich, and I thought Dr. Heinan here. Anyone else that I'm missing? We had some others that provided some input as well. Oh, Ms. Keith is here. Dr. Shirk is here. Dr. Gocey's here, maybe? Yep.
First of all, thank you for the presentation and the summary of those options that we narrowed it down to, and I'll open it for discussion and comments from board members. Dr. Daniels?
Dr. Banakowski, thank you for, number one, providing us with a fairly detailed report, but not telling us all of it this evening again. I want to explain my thought process, and I'll try to be as brief as you were, because it's going to appear that I've changed my mind markedly from where I was last in December. In December, my comments, my concerns that I relayed to you were lack of equity for ninth graders across the district should we choose option three. And without going into a lot of detail, I was working on a research project the very next day at work and trying to eliminate some very messy confounding variables that I knew were going to not result in a clean study. And it struck me that option three is really our cleanest study. It has the opportunity to get a more heterogeneous cohort of students so that we can examine how successful it is for them at Olathe Northwest, and so I really feel that it is the, that it is the best option of the four presented. That being said, I would choose not to call it a pilot study, but rather a phase-in process as I think, I very clearly want our ninth grade to move to the high school. And so I would view this, and I would tell the patrons who do not reside in Olathe Northwest, that this too will come to you, it may be a year or two down the road. And then I'll make one other comment, and I know that this is a difficult process that we have to go through to make this decision. I don't think it should be a lengthy one. I think we need to move quickly. Our community is ready for this change, and we need to capture their readiness and their enthusiasm. And so if we get bogged down in the details, then I say no phase-in at all, and we just move forward and get ready to implement it at all four high schools.
Dr. Banakowski, and to everybody who is on the implementation team or the study team, I guess would be the better way to describe that. I certainly appreciate all the effort that's gone into this and all of the thought process, and I know that the board is the one who generated that discussion and discuss those many hours of meetings and all of the time that was spent working on this, and I certainly appreciate that and understand that. And in the business world, we do that a lot of times. We spend a lot of time studying issues, and at the end of the day, you come to the conclusion that with all the research and everything that you've done, that the options are not viable. So as I look at these four options, one, two, and four, and I know, and we don't want to equate this down to cost, but we would do want to equate it to efficiencies, they're expensive, with not very many, not very many students being able to participate in either one of those three options. So based on that and the inefficiencies that I saw there, and the implement, I could just imagine the administrative difficulties that we would have in implementing those three options. I immediately put those on the shelf, and I've come back to option three, which is the one with the students at Prairie Trail voluntarily going to Olathe Northwest, and I look at that, and from an efficiency standpoint and from a study standpoint, that seems to fit the bill. But I come back to something that I said in 1999, when I ran for the school board, and I have been sitting up here for eight years now, making decisions for the students in this community, and sometimes very difficult decisions, and one, one, one standard that I've always tried to use is, is this fair, is this decision fair, as fair as it can be and as equitable as can be for all students involved, and is it for the best of all students in the, in the entire Olathe School District from the farthest reaches of our boundaries? And when I put any option three or any of the four options against that standard, it just doesn't measure up, because we're not giving all of our ninth-grade students the same opportunities, and I can't support any of that based upon that standard, because it's just, it's not equitable to all the students in the school district, all of our ninth graders or future ninth graders. I think we heard Dr. All's presentation tonight, a wonderful presentation, and this board voted in May of 2007 that we were willing to go forward with reconfiguration, and I think that's what we need to do as a board. We need to put our energies into that, we need to, we need to take those opportunities to present that to our community and educate our community in regards, in regards to that, and then let the community decide. And I think by going with any of these four options, it becomes a big distraction for us, for the staff, and for the community. So in that frame of mind, I would suggest that if the reconfiguration passed, I would be willing to look at some of these options a year from now. But right now, I think it's a major distraction for us, for our, for our parents, for our students, and for the community as a whole to try to do any of these four.
Dr. Banakowski, if I could have Mrs. Yurkovich come up and also Dr. Poss, just to ask a couple of questions, if I could?
I just know they would run right up here.
I'm sure.
And they're friends as well.
I also agree that we need to look very, very carefully at what we're, what we're asking our community to do, but in light of some possibilities that are unique to, to your school, to Prairie Trail, there are a couple of questions I need to ask that may create a better understanding of the thought process in looking at this high school and this junior high. One of those questions certainly has to do with the cost projected in Harlan. You had talked about that cost, and this certainly seems the most economical at $77,000. One of the questions I had was, what do you see as cost for the following should this proposal be approved? In other words, in the next year or the following year?
Go ahead.
The costs that were gathered, as is indicated, include an increase in staff that would be needed just by moving the freshman class to the high school, and then there are some transportation costs and those kinds of things. A second-year cost, because of the growth in that area, may also include some staffing issues, but the other costs should not increase. There shouldn't be that additional, again, and I defer to Dr. Banakowski to clarify that even further.
And I do want to point out, in option three, our projected model was that was 40% of the freshmen would select. We had to base it on something, and so we took the current freshman class. Now, that amount can change if more students would go or fewer students would go, and we would almost have to look at the cost-benefit analysis based on the actual number. But we used approximately a 50-50 amount to come up with this projection, knowing that you kind of toss a coin, because we haven't asked the parents how many of them would be willing to go. But the cost the next year would be that similar in the sense that we're anticipating in this model, because if a sufficient number of students would go, we would also have teachers transfer from the current ninth grade at Prairie Trail to teach ninth grade at Olathe Northwest, and that's why this is more of a cost benefit than some of the other, much more efficient than some of the other models, because it would be a sufficient amount of students.
One thing I'd like to add is that what's different about the costs here is that it wouldn't be the entire freshman class. If the entire freshman class is part of the high school, then we gain efficiencies. Trying to have some of them there and some of them left by choice at Prairie Trail, that's where you gain some additional inefficiencies that contribute to costs. And so each one of these models has some inefficiencies to it, obviously, and this one does too, but I want to make sure that any costs related to growth are the same cost we would have for growth regardless. So I just want to clarify that a little bit.
If you would respond to specific information concerning your student population, the questions, and this would be to Prairie Trail. Stacy, your size compared to other junior highs, would you first of all answer that question?
This year, as the enrollment numbers indicate, Prairie Trail has the largest enrollment of the eight junior highs, closely followed by California Trail within 10, and then Chisholm Trail, probably 40 or 50 behind us.
Okay. Next, if we talk about core classes available, would you please explain, first of all, core classes, and then, second of all, would you explain the relationship of core classes that are offered at Prairie Trail versus core classes that may be offered at the other junior highs?
As far as size of core classes?
Yes.
Okay. Core classes, of course, are the basic curriculum requirements, math, science, social studies, language arts. Those are our core classes. The PTR at Prairie Trail is a little bit higher than the other junior highs.
Pupil teacher ratio.
Pupil teacher ratio, thank you. And, and within the range, again, of Chisholm and California Trail, the, the class size itself, because PTR factors in a lot of different things, and you actually have several different PTRs if you include the entire student body, which would include music classes and special education classes and small support classes and that kind of skews. But if you just look at, at core classes, we have at our seventh and our eighth grade, three interdisciplinary teams, and again, a reminder of what that looks like at seventh and eighth grade, out of the four core classes, teachers, team, and, and so with three teams, about a third of the student population at each one of those grade levels. Currently, we have right at 300 seventh graders and right at 300 eighth graders, which, again, will translate then into about 100 students a team and an average core class of about 25. And that can vary dependent, especially in math with the different levels and opportunities, and some of our advanced math classes might be a little bit larger and the general class is a little bit smaller, again, to, because of enrollment and needs and those, those kinds of things. We, we do have also, we do have a range that our, our team sizes, because an average team, as I, as I said, is around 100 students. Our core classes might, would be a little bit larger than, than perhaps a school that doesn't have as, as many students in that grade level, but still might have three teams. We, with the staffing inefficiency, the conversation has been to look at that more closely and align. We do have core classes in some areas that currently are as large as 27. Our algebra classes, and we do have those at seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, they are pretty level at 28. An increase in, in our population would increase our, our core class sizes. So I don't know if that answers?
It does. Would you also address physical spaces? If you talk about how this junior high was built compared to other junior highs?
Okay. When Prairie Trail was built, and as each junior high has been built, prior principals and staff have looked at the building and talked about improvements and where do we need to add. Prairie Trail has, has been blessed in that we have, when we were built, we have three music rooms, we have two art rooms, and those are additions from prior junior highs. The number of classrooms that we have currently, we have 21 classrooms to serve core classes, and then we have six science rooms and three sped rooms, and then a variety of... And then we have six science rooms and three sped rooms, and then a variety of classrooms that are family and consumer science and art and those specific areas. So, so that is where our greatest challenge has, has come in the rapid growth that we have, is, is that currently, our room utilization is, is very tight with the enrollment that we have. For the last two years, our teachers have shared classrooms. There is not a staff member at Prairie Trail who doesn't share with another staff member. And so people are moving from, from class to class, and not every hour. We've worked very hard so they could be in a classroom a block of time before having to move. But there is, is not the benefit of having a classroom during a planned time or supervisory where a teacher could remain and, and work. And, and that's where we are currently with our enrollment. And in a, on a room utilization chart, we actually have seven class periods during the day where a core classroom is not being used for instruction or, or a team meeting. And, and so, and so there are opportunities sometimes, and we utilize those classrooms for teacher work areas. And that's another piece that, a, a challenge that comes with teachers moving from place to place is when they're not teaching, they need a place to work. And our, our district and, and our educational system now is so connected to technology that computers are necessary. And so as we've grown, technology has been provided. We have banks of, of computers in work areas that, that teachers can go to when, when they're on plan. We do have other classrooms empty during hours of the day, 13, actually. Those are specific classrooms, however, like, as I mentioned earlier, band or orchestra and, and family and consumer science, so they don't lend themselves to core instruction. And, and we do utilize some of those classrooms even for classes like PACE and other smaller, which is a, an academic study time, support time, that where we can have small groups of kids sit around tables and, and still be able to utilize that space.
I'm going to need to jump in here, if you'll allow me, just because of the constraints of time. We're going to need to suspend this issue and take our break, come back with presentations and public comments. So if you will all come back to us, we'll pick up right where we've left off here. I'm sorry to do that, but we've gone a little beyond the time we had planned. So let's take a 10-minute comfort break, and then we'll come back for presentations and, and public comments, and then we'll pick right up here again. I'd like to call our meeting back to order, please. Welcome, everyone. It's time for that part of our agenda where we do recognitions and awards. And I'll turn the program over to Laura Lee, who will make introductions for us.
Okay, well, we have a really full house, so I hope we can get everyone moved around like we need to. Welcome to all of our special guests and your families. We're delighted to see you. And as I call your name or the name of your group, I'm going to ask you to come up the center aisle so that we don't have anyone tripping over equipment on the sides and be recognized. We're going to begin with our business partnerships and ask Mr. Jim Smith, our Director of Community Development, to assist with the business recognitions. And that first recognition will be for Brotherhood Bank and Trust. Stephen Hale, Vice President, and Scott Case, Branch Manager. And is Christie Gottchak here from Washington Elementary?
This is.
Okay. Brotherhood Bank and Trust has a new branch at 119th and Ridgeview. And Scott Case, who's their branch manager, was interested in becoming a business partner and thought that nearby Washington Elementary would be a good match. So working with Principal Christie Gottchak, Brotherhood Bank helped with the cost of busing Washington Elementary students to a dress rehearsal of the Snow White Ballet in December at Johnson County Community College. They also have plans for a number of other activities, including providing incentives for students during state assessments and recognizing teachers with staff dinners, and student artwork will be displayed at the bank. And tonight, we have with us the two individuals that Christie has worked most with in developing the partnership, Scott Case, who's the manager for the 119th and Ridgeview Bank, and Steve Hale is the bank's Marketing Director and a former member of the Gardner Edgerton School District Board. So please welcome them as our new business partner with Washington Elementary. I told you, I told you. Our next recognition is for Panera Bread Bakery Cafe. Are they're here tonight? Good. Michelle Cole is the President and Owner of Glaze Marketing. Panera is, as we all know, a place to go for fresh bread, coffee, and lunches. And Michelle Cole handles the marketing for Panera and most recently worked with the district on fundraising opportunities through their Dough for Funds program. As a community member, they want to partner with the district for food, gifts, fundraising, and other needs, so please welcome Panera as a district partner. Now, we have a special young lady with us tonight. I'm going to ask her to come forward with her home parents, Cheko Kamayama, who is the oldest daughter of Dr. Ko Kamayama, Director of Linguistics and English at Kiowaigakuin High School in Maibashi, Japan, which our district exchanges with. And her home parents are Tim and Linda Lynx. Dr. Kamayama, Cheko's father, has been instrumental in helping to coordinate our Japanese Olathe Student Exchanges. And Cheko arrived in Olathe with her father in November, and she'll visit our schools and businesses until February 10th, when she returns to Japan to begin a new job. She will assist in Japanese classes at all the high schools and is being hosted by our district families, several of our district families. Cheko's visit attests to the friendships that are fostered by our international exchanges. So this is our chance to welcome Cheko to Olathe. Hi, Linda. Good to see you. Some of us feel like we have family in Japan. I just heard from my Japanese exchange student at Christmas time, so, and I think that's become a common experience because of this exchange. Now, we'd like to call forward a very impressive group of young people, the Indian Trail Junior High Knowledge Master Team. And I'm going to read off the names, just come on forward. Kelsey Bjork, Gillian Campbell, Abby Gaylord, Elijah Haas, Colin Halpin, Dallin Hull, Rhett Emel, Sunil Aier, Madeline Meyer, Jessie Miller, Rex Miller, Heber Morales, Austin Motley, Kristen Oldacre, Austin Ponder, Emily Wedeman, and Coach Jana Colgan, with Principal Tracy Mary, if she's here. She may have another school activity. Oh. You're so petite, you look like one of the kids. The Knowledge Master Open Competition was designed to stimulate enthusiasm for learning and provide recognition for academic accomplishment. The contest is run on classroom computers and involves tens of thousands of students throughout the U.S. and in many foreign countries. This year, the competition was held on December 5th, and a team of students from Indian Trail Junior High scored 14,036 points out of a possible 2,000, making them the national champions in Division Two for junior high teams. And this is the first national championship at the junior high level in our district's history, to our knowledge. The team also took third place in the state of Kansas, which was a competition against all junior highs, including those of much larger size. So let's give them another round of applause. Okay, now, before you sit down, I'd like to know if there are any family members here, and if so, please stand, or if you're already standing, wave your hands. We expect to see you again next year. Now, we're going to recognize Larry Blair, Elementary Band Instructor. We're asking him to come up with Martha Gable, the District Fine Arts Coordinator. And Principal Linda Boyle from Indian Creek. Mr. Blair has been teaching music for about 40 years, including the last six years in the Olathe District. During his career, he's taught both elementary and secondary band and strings, and he's also been both an elementary and a middle school principal. During the past 10 years, he has returned to his roots during retirement and has been teaching band to fifth and sixth grade students at Countryside, Heatherstone, Indian Creek, and Walnut Grove Elementary Schools. He has a special gift for helping students feel appreciated and comfortable about being part of the band, and he has seen some of his students go on to become part of the district high school honor band. Last month, he was honored by the Northeast Kansas Music Educators Association as the 2007 Outstanding Music Educator of the Year, an award that his fellow music teachers say is well-deserved. Congratulations, and thank you for being part of our district. And this is actually the second award he's gotten since retirement. In, in 2002, he was named Outstanding Elementary Strings Educator for District One of the KMEA. So congratulations again. And do you have any family members here?
My wife today.
Now, our National Board Certified Teachers, Angie Hedges and Barbara Williams from Olathe Northwest High School, Gail Ross from Scarborough Elementary, Michelle Thrower from Cedar Creek Elementary, and their principals, Dr. Gwen Pos, Ms. Jamie Craig, and Ms. Stephanie Pritchard, with Dr. Banikowski, Mr. Larry Spots, President of the ONEA, and Carolyn Good, who's on the Executive Board, and they serve on the Professional Council. The National Board Certification process is a rigorous professional development that teachers pursue voluntarily for the betterment of their teaching and learning. Candidates spend approximately 400 hours or more preparing for and completing the certification process. And the National Board Certification they achieve is an advanced teaching credential valid for 10 years. Achieving this level of recognition is a symbol of commitment to excellence in teaching and is the premier example of our district's theme this year, invest in excellence. Currently, we have 28 National Board Certified Teachers in our district, with an additional seven candidates in the process. Tonight, we are honoring these four teachers who have just received their National Board Certification. Angie Hedges, English and Resource Teacher at Olathe Northwest High School. Would you step forward so we know which one you are? She's a teacher who pushes students to achieve above and beyond what they thought they were capable of in literature and writing, and her students say that she teaches them how to think, not what to think. Gail Ross, fifth grade teacher at Scarborough Elementary, is always ready for a challenge. She's active in the Scarborough community, a lifelong learner on the BLT, and after teaching at Scarborough for almost 10 years, took on the challenge of changing grade levels and moving to the fifth grade. Michelle Thrower, fourth grade teacher at Cedar Creek, has been a member of the BLT for several years and is a leader among her peers. Her principal says she is obviously very dedicated and goal-oriented, and she also just got married over winter break. So that was quite a lot, planning a wedding and going for National Board Certification at the same time. Barbara Williams, English teacher at Olathe Northwest, is a teacher who motivates and inspires students to do their best. Her students say she is awesome. She cares about them as real people. Please join us in congratulating these teachers. And I believe a check will be presented. Did you want to say anything about the check? A check will be presented to each candidate, and Mr. Spots, let's just say something about that.
Those of you who know me very well, you, well, Dr. All can say, I really like talking about money. And this is just a small token of our congratulations and appreciation for those outstanding educators in Olathe who have achieved advanced National Board Certification. It's a $1,000 check. You can't cash that one, though. You know, we affectionately say checks in the mail, but it is on the way. But we just wanted to get, give you something tangible to, as a reward for achieving this higher level of, of professional development. And we do appreciate your contributions to the excellent education that your students are going to be receiving now because of, of all the hard work that you've put in in receiving this honor.
Okay, I know that there are family members here, and there's also a special fan club of other, our other National Board Certified Teachers here in the audience to support them. So would family members and fan club, please stand, or if you're standing, wave your hands. Our final recognition is for the Olathe Parent Leadership Institute Fall 2007 Graduates. And I have a whole page of names, so I'm going to ask you, all of you who know you are graduates, to please come forward. I think it's the red shirts. Including your building leaders. This is really an exciting moment for all of us, and I think probably especially for Mr. Poland, because I think it was shortly after he first joined the Board of Education that he indicated how excited he was about promoting parent involvement in schools, and talked to Dr. All about his interest in a program that would enhance and support parent involvement in their children's schools. The group we're recognizing tonight represents the very first Parent Leadership Institute Cohort Group in our district. They're extremely dedicated and committed. They've been attending school six full days of training over three months. The parents and building leaders represent nine of our schools, Countryside, Westview, Sunnyside, Mahaffey, Indian Creek, Chisholm Trail, Pioneer Trail, California Trail, and Olathe North. And I think that Mr. Poland wants to say something about them.
On behalf of the, the school board members, I'd like to express my appreciation to, to all of you who participated. I'd like to express my appreciation to Luann, who put together such a fine program and such a meaningful program. I'd just also like to share with the public a little bit of just the commitment these people made. A lot of them took vacation days to attend these things. A lot of them arranged their work schedule so that they could come during the day and then work that night. So the commitment these people made is, is a tremendous commitment, and, you know, it's something that I appreciate, and I, I know they've got, their work isn't done, because one of the things they agreed to do is to complete a project within the next, you know, I forget what the timeline is, but they've got a project to do. So I'm, I'm really excited to see what comes back from that. We're talking about pilot programs tonight. I guess I'd equate this to a pilot program. You guys are the first. There's a lot of potential in this program, and, you know, I welcome what you guys are going to bring to it. I'd like to share with, just one comment that I heard afterwards, after the graduation ceremony, and that was that, that Olathe is the only school district that he's been to, or that shows such a genuine care of the staff that shows such a genuine care of the staff and administration for the parents and kids. So, I mean, the recognition of how involved that we want parents to become in the school district was acknowledged by one of the, you know, the individuals that participated in this. So I really appreciated it, and I just want to let you guys know, on behalf of the School Board, how important this initiative is, and thank you for your participation.
Okay, let's give him another hand.
Thank you, Mr. Poland, and congratulations, everyone. That's a wonderful group. That time in our agenda where we take public comments. At each regular meeting, the Board reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire Board. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium at the front of the room via the center aisle, the podium here to my right. Please state your name and your address. And the clerk has indicated to me that there is no one who has signed up ahead of time to speak, so I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Board. Okay, seeing no indication, we'll dispense with public comments and move forward with the rest of our agenda. Board Members, we need to go back to an earlier item that we had to interrupt and suspend earlier, 2.02, related to potential Grade IX programs. And Mrs. Wilheim, you were in the middle of some questions, and I had to interrupt you, so I'll throw it back to you to see if you need further clarification or anything else you'd like to do.
Thank you. And, Dr. Banikowski, did you have something that you wanted to say before?
The only thing is, I think Mrs. Yurkovich wanted to add a little bit to what she was answering, spatialization at Prairie Trail, and just to tie up that question, if that be all right.
That would be great.
As I was talking before the break, and in response to Ms. Wilheim's questions, I was sharing information about Prairie Trail. And earlier, I had mentioned that Prairie Trail, California Trail, Chisholm are just all kind of neck and neck as far as enrollment. The description I provided about room utilization and classroom sharing is occurring in those locations as well. We're not unique in teachers moving from place to place or sharing classrooms. The other piece to that, and that we look forward to, as California Trail looks forward to some relief, because classroom additions were a part of this bond that just passed, when you make those tough decisions about the boundaries for Junior High Number Nine, that should provide some relief to Prairie Trail as well, and we look forward to that. Just on a personal note, because of some comments that were made to me at the break about all of these numbers and carrying a folder around, those who know me know that I'm always carrying a folder. And didn't have a package prepared, other than over winter break, I did spend time looking at enrollment at Prairie Trail next year and doing some planning, and so the numbers were fresh. And given that I'm a former math teacher, numbers pretty much stay in my mind. So now, I don't know how many clocks are in the building. John Hutchinson asked me that question, but I could find that out for tomorrow.
Thank you. And, Board, I had the, or took the opportunity just to visit with both of the high school, Dr. Pos, and also Mrs. Yurkovich, and wanted to revisit and ask some of these questions so that all of you could hear some of the answers when they, when we talk about space issues and what they're dealing with, and space issues, and also looking at Option Three. And one of the questions that I had of many, when I talked with them, that became a reality was that, in this Option Three, we perhaps have the opportunity not only to impact the academic programs for students, which is probably at the top of the emphasis for all of us, but perhaps to impact what now may be, not an overcrowding, but certainly is a school that is full. And we don't have those options at our other buildings at this point. Hopefully, in the future, we will, but right now, we do. And I guess the question that I would have for all of us to answer is, do we wait on that option, or do we give our students the academic challenges that we earlier talked about, or that Dr. All and John earlier talked about in that six-and-nine reconfiguration? I saw a quote that said, and I wanted to share that with you. I'll need to put my glasses on to share it with you properly. And it says two things. One, leadership is the ability to translate vision into reality, and we're asked, being asked to be leaders. And the second is that leadership is always about coping with change and about doing the right thing. And leaders are architects. We have the opportunity to shape, year by year, day by day, the education of our students. So I want us to think seriously as we talk about Option Three, and talk about those other options. Is that opportunity now for us? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Wilheim. Anyone else?
I would like to agree with several things that have been said this evening and somewhat disagree with one of the comments that were made. I would also propose that Option Three is the most favorable option in my eyes, and the reason that it's the most favorable, in my opinion, is because it allows this opportunity for a broad spectrum of students. And that's what we're talking about with potential reconfiguration, is the opportunity for all of our students. And by implementing a phase-in program where we are offering this opportunity to students all across the spectrum, regardless of their academic interests, regardless of their academic accomplishments, this particular option allows us the opportunity to see how we deal and how we make this transition for all of our students all across the spectrum. And I think that is the most attractive thing about this option. I also have a lot of reservations about implementing a phase-in program that would have so few students at each of the high schools. I think that is fraught with issues, and not the least of which is having a class of students who would be small in number and could be victims of bullying, and who knows what else might come along with that. So I guess maybe there's some power in numbers, and I also like Option Three for that reason. As far as the equity issue is concerned, and this is where I disagree somewhat with Mr. Parker, I believe that we have some other programs across our district that, at this point in time, do not provide equity for all of our students. Full-day kindergarten is one of those. International language is another one of those programs. The goal is that we will be able to provide international language for all of our students, and we will be able to provide full-day kindergarten for all of our students. So when we look at the phase-in program under Option Three, no, it isn't available to all of our students. But the goal is that with the reconfiguration and with a favorable result from the bond issue, that we will be able to provide this opportunity for all of our students. And I think the phase-in program makes a lot of sense, because we can work out some of the issues that go along with that transition to ninth grade, and then we can reassure our sixth-grade parents that we're going to focus on those sixth graders when the actual reconfiguration happens, because we will have had, whatever it may be, a couple of years to work through the issues with the ninth grade, and I think that provides a great deal of reassurance to our sixth-grade parents, because they are very concerned about that transition. So I offer that up for consideration for Option Three.
So in taking a look at the various options we have in front of us, one, I think it would be good to be able to do this all across the district. We face the logistical challenge and financial challenge with trying to do that, and I commend the staff and the team for really putting forth a very detailed and exhaustive look as to how best to do this. Ms. Ashley talks about international language. That's another example of a very effective trial that we've utilized here to gather data, calm emotions, and I recall very vividly the emotion that was behind us moving forward with that, and I think that the trial period that we've utilized has effectively shown people that this is a very productive program, may not be the most ideal. So I look at Option Three as probably the best opportunity to move forward and try and gather data, and try and give people more of a facts-based review of what it is that we're going to do. And I certainly understand and agree with Mr. Parker's desire to have equity across the district. I think it's important to note that the team has gone back and taken some of the feedback from the Board from our last meeting, particularly that around parent choice, and come back with an option that is parent choice. I think it's important to note that this is still a trial period, and the message to the community means that it is a trial period. We've talked tonight about a potential decision in November of this year that would determine as to whether or not it no longer is a trial period and then becomes a phase-in. And so we'll, you know, we'll address those things in time. But I commend the team for putting together, given all the pros and the cons, the best option, or I should say, of the four, for us to consider.
I wanted to also echo my support for the, what I see as Option Three, and I voiced that same support the first time we saw this in December, and for all the reasons that have been discussed here tonight. And I prefer not to consider it a pilot. We've used the term pilot. I prefer to consider it an implementation of a decision we've made. But there's one important factor in that process that we've got to address first, and that's the November election for the bonds, for the funds, to implement the plan that we've approved. So in terms of calling this an implementation, I fully support Option Number Three. I think it makes the most sense for all the reasons we've just discussed. But I also think I would much rather have that November decision made before we actually implemented that first phase. And I would like to see us, while I support that option, consider delaying it. Not that I'm, I don't sit here and live in fear that the bond's not going to pass. I don't want to send that message. I'm going to do everything I can to see that it does, and I think it will. I just think it's prudent to take that first step in implementation after we have the approval from the community for the funding to expand our high schools, so that we know it's not a one- or two-year experiment, if you will, that has to be somehow redone because we didn't, don't have the funding, but it's something that's been blessed by the community, and we're moving forward. And so I would offer that for your consideration, Board.
And I'll just weigh in on that. I would fully support Mr. Gilmore on that. I think that it answers a lot of logistical challenges that we would have in front of us, also answers a lot of the, well, what do you do if, that the bond issue doesn't pass and you have to reverse course, and I think also provides a clear communication plan or path to the community of bringing the rest of the district in on the proposal as well.
Mr. Gilmore pretty well echoed my thoughts also, looking at the four plans. I do want to commend Dr. Banikowski and your group. One thing I've learned here is you've got to be careful what you ask you guys of, because
We do it right.
Do it the Olahtha way. I, you know, my concern is, I think the Plan Three does make the most sense. We have a unique opportunity with the, you know, close proximity of those two schools, and so I think that makes an awful lot of sense. I do worry about signal sending to the community as far as participant, or doing it for the next fiscal years before the election, as Mr. Gilmore said. We've got other issues coming up tonight where people are struggling to try to maintain programs, and for us to spend money on a program that has not yet been approved by our district, you know, I feel is sending the wrong signal to the community. And so I think, in prudence, we're going to have, if I remember right, we've got at least two years after the bond before we actually institute the reconfiguration, so we've got plenty of time to do this. You've laid the groundwork, so we're ready to roll if and when the reconfiguration bond issue passes. So I would, you know, I'm more than willing to do an implementation program, because then it would be an implementation program, and it presents a unique opportunity for, so that we can, I guess, use, lack of a better term, the Prairie Trail students as guinea pigs, right? And, you know, not guinea pigs, but to learn from them. And so, and the whole district will benefit from that. So I would be in favor of the program, but I think it would be prudent to wait until after the election myself.
I do want to echo, almost an appreciation on the analysis team, that one of the things that is helpful for us is that we would like sufficient time to plan all the details and work so that we have a cohort group that we can plan on, and certainly, whether, if that decision can be made this evening or put to rest for next year at this, even an earlier time, that would help us in December or so to be able to do this. Students are enrolling already for next year, so.
Just additional comment, in light of my earlier statement. If the, we had already had approval from our community and from our citizens that they were in favor of the reconfiguration program, and this proposal was before us, I would be absolutely in favor of it. It's the best of the three options, and it certainly begins to show us the way to be the guiding light, so to speak, for the implementation in our other high schools as well. But I would just like to have the confidence to be able to say to the rest of the community, we're going to start it, and yes, it's coming to you as well.
Okay, any other comments or questions of staff? This is an information item tonight, not an action item, so we don't need to take any specific action, but I think you've heard some, Dr. All. Do you want to make any comments before we move on? All right, go ahead.
Well, I want to, I want to make clear, if there's not action tonight, I would be interpreting that, that we would not go forward with any planning on these options, because of the time sensitivity. And so I just, I do think we need to kind of clear that up. No action means we stay the same. If you want us to change course to implement something in O8 or 9, I would appreciate that action tonight, because I am afraid about the dwindling timeframe that Dr. Banikowski talked about, so.
Well, I did not sense consensus to move on any one of these options tonight, but in my personal opinion, we have a lot of work to do in educating, continuing the education of public over the next nine months for that November election date, and I think that needs to be our primary focus.
And I think we're comfortable with doing the implementation after the election. I think she gave you a hint that if the election is in November, she would be hoping to have direction in December, so that we can have adequate planning to do it the best that we know how for Olahtha, and for Olahtha Northwest, and Olahtha, for Prairie Trail, so.
And I think we've laid the groundwork for that.
Yeah, I think so.
I believe so.
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Banikowski. Thank you all for your input on that. Item 2.03 is relating to the sales tax update. And if you'll recall, at our, I believe it was our November meeting, we talked about getting the Board Officers and Dr. All together with Chairman Serball, the County Commission, and having some further discussion related to the proposal that's going to be on the ballot in August related to the sales tax, and the fact that the portion dedicated towards education is going to be eliminated in the tax proposal that's out there. We had that discussion, I don't remember, it was before Christmas, I don't remember exactly what day it was. We met for about an hour, and Ms. Ashley and Dr. All were with me, and Chairman Serball and Mr. Jarrett, their legal counsel. And we had an extensive conversation, and I want to let you two jump in here as I try to describe what happened. I'd love to tell you Merry Christmas, that we got what we wanted, but that's not what happened. And, you know, the position of the county, as, I didn't hear anything in that meeting that was not, that was new to me. I mean, it was stuff that we had heard publicly, things that we have heard directly in talking to county commissioners. We expressed the desire to try to find some other way, if you will. There was not any acceptance of that. The continued discussion of, we've known for now two years, five years originally, that this tax was going away in terms of benefiting the schools, and we need to plan accordingly. So I guess we're just officially reporting back to you that we've made no progress along that front. The county is very confident that the sales tax referendum will pass, even without a component for the schools. They speak very boldly to that point. And, I don't know, Dr. All or Ms. Ashley, do you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
Thank you pretty much, Summer.
So in terms of what we did as a Board, we said, let's go back and meet
So, in terms of what we did as a board, we said, let's go back and meet with them and see what we can find out, and we've done that. So, now it's back on the table for us, what do we want to do from here, if anything?
Mr. Gilmore has some thoughts on that, I appreciate the update. Just go back a little bit here in time, back to when this education tax was passed, and that's really the premise under which it was presented to the community, was solely as an education tax. And having been a member of the community at that time, not on this board, I remember watching that closely, and, you know, maybe there were county discussions that said that this is going to be the end of the road for the school districts, I'm sure that there were some of those kinds of conversations that transpired, but from the view of the community, that certainly wasn't the way it was presented. I still believe that there's a community solution in front of us, we just haven't gotten to it yet, and I think as a board that we need to continue to forge forward for that, certainly want to reaffirm the fact that there are shared interests here, shared needs, both from the county and from the school district. But it even goes further than that, as a board, we represent the Alatha community, and that community voted to have a sales tax that provided educational funding. And I think that the community needs to understand clearly what's on the table, and that is the opportunity for that to go away. And I think they clearly need to understand the very real possibility of double taxation as a result of that. And so, as part of our guiding principles and goals here as a board, one of the imperatives is communication with the community and understanding how it is that our constituents feel. So, knowing that I still believe that a community solution out there exists, I guess, Mr. Gilmore, what I would like to offer up for this board, is that we seek that feedback from our community. And I think this is one of those important things, that as we are here to represent them, and we are here to represent you, that we ask the community to let us know where this stands on their radar screen. And I would venture to say that with the busy lives and things that many people have today, that this is probably something, meaning the county proposal versus the alternative, something that has clearly resonated with everyone, but I think it's important that that does resonate with them and that we do get that message out, and ask them for that feedback.
So, I understand you, Mr. Churchman, you're not suggesting any particular action that we take, but other than asking the community to respond to us with their comments related to this issue?
Yeah, absolutely, I don't think that it's necessary that we take formal action at this point in time, but I do believe that it's important to seek all the inputs that we can, and what I'm asking for is just a message to the community to let us hear your thoughts on it, and let that help guide our path going forward.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Churchman, we're now going to move on to item five, which is our consent agenda. We have 12 items on our consent agenda, and let me first ask if there is any particular item that you would like to have dealt with separately or that you have questions on. And if there are none, then we can entertain a motion to approve it as it is presented.
Mr. Gilmore, I'd like to, excuse me, that's in section six, I'll wait till then.
Okay.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items as they are listed.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Mr. Parker, any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Motion passes. Section five deals with action on bids, contracts, and agreements. Mr. Churchman, I believe you had an item there you wanted to talk about?
I'd like to ask a question about 6.02, and then also, I'd like to ask Rita to come up and talk about 6.06 through nine, I have some comments for. 6.02, Mr. Houghton, just want to confirm that that includes, this is the elementary security upgrades, that includes all of the hardware, the monitors and the wiring back to wherever the monitoring location will be?
That's correct, it includes two monitors to be placed in the office area, it includes the voice relays to the front door, and includes everything for the example of the pilot school at Fairview that we ran.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to just have some dialogue around 6.06, 7, 8, 9, and nine's the last one. I just want to take an opportunity, Rita, to commend you and your staff, back in 2005, you brought forth a five-year technology plan to the board, and I think there's some important milestones that are worthy of noting. And for those who aren't familiar with our technology plan, it's really about bringing the digital classroom to all of our, all of our schools, it's about equitable access to technology for all of our students, and that's either through laptops or PDAs or desktop computers, and then putting the wireless capability in all of our buildings. And there's a variety of milestones that came with that five-year plan, that had completion dates of anywhere from 2010, 2009, even into the latter part of this year, and I think in all three of those primary areas, the district team has significantly pulled ahead those completion dates. We were projecting digital technology in all of our classrooms by June of 2010, that's now been pulled ahead until September of 2009, so that's a significant increase in the timeframe, and I think it's just a great job. And I know a lot of this had to do with the approval of the recent bond, giving the additional money to go ahead and accelerate that, but it's just another tribute that the district is putting money in the right spot for technology, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
You actually got away without a question. Did you get that?
I do have a question.
One of the people that's in the audience, Ron Wagner, Ron, just stand up, Ron heads the team that installs the digital classrooms, and if you ever get the opportunity to go out and see these guys in working, it's amazing, and they really deserve the credit, they do an amazing job, we have a great team.
You didn't get away that easy. Mrs. Wilhelm.
More just a comment than a question, I guess when I saw the 290 classrooms and an August completion, I was, it was just amazing, and so I was going to ask that question, but Jim was so very complimentary, and I guess I need to follow up on that and have trust that you obviously can do that, so congratulations, go forward, and thank you.
I can't do that.
She said Ron is also known as Superman, I don't know what that means.
They are amazing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions on section six? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve?
I've got to ask once again for 603 and 609 to be pulled off for a separate vote due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, Mr. Poland, we'll pull those off. That was 603 and 609?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we'll entertain a motion to approve without those two items?
I move that we approve bids, contracts, and agreements as listed, with the exception of 6.03 and 6.09.
Second. It's moved by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Mr. Poland. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0, we'll give Mr. Poland an opportunity to excuse himself, and please note that for the record, Mrs. Carpenter. And we'll consider 6.03 and 6.09 either separately or together, Board, whatever your pleasure is.
I move that we approve the bids, contracts, and agreements under 6.03 and 6.09.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Dr. Daniels. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0, and we note for the record that Mr. Poland has abstained from discussion and voting. Item seven, another action item, first one, 7.01, deals with a bond resolution for the first issuance, it's the next step in the process of issuing our bonds from the recent bond approval. One note for the board's information, that we have representatives from Springstead, Mr. Tom Calico, and Gilmore and Bell, our legal counsel, Mr. Al Wilkins are here, if we have any questions for them, and Mr. Deener is also available. This is a form of resolution that we have seen before. If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion from someone pleased to approve it as presented.
So moved to approve the bond finance resolution authorizing the public sale of $50 million, principal amount of general obligation school bonds, Series 2008A of Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, and authorizing certain other actions relating to the bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Poland, any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0, and we note for the record that Mr. Poland has abstained from discussion and voting. Item seven, another action item, first one, 7.01, deals with a bond resolution for the first issuance, it's the next step in the process of issuing our bonds from the recent bond approval. One note for the board's information, that we have representatives from Springstead, Mr. Tom Calico, and Gilmore and Bell, our legal counsel, Mr. Al Wilkins are here, if we have any questions for them, and Mr. Deener is also available. This is a form of resolution that we have seen before. If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion from someone pleased to approve it as presented.
So moved to approve the bond finance resolution authorizing the public sale of $50 million, principal amount of general obligation school bonds, Series 2008A of Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, and authorizing certain other actions relating to the bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Poland, any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0, and we note for the record that Mr. Poland has abstained from discussion and voting. Item seven, another action item, first one, 7.01, deals with a bond resolution for the first issuance, it's the next step in the process of issuing our bonds from the recent bond approval. One note for the board's information, that we have representatives from Springstead, Mr. Tom Calico, and Gilmore and Bell, our legal counsel, Mr. Al Wilkins are here, if we have any questions for them, and Mr. Deener is also available. This is a form of resolution that we have seen before. If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion from someone pleased to approve it as presented.
So moved to approve the bond finance resolution authorizing the public sale of $50 million, principal amount of general obligation school bonds, Series 2008A of Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, and authorizing certain other actions relating to the bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Poland, any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0, we'll give Mr. Poland an opportunity to excuse himself, and please note that for the record, Mrs. Carpenter. And we'll consider 6.03 and 6.09 either separately or together, Board, whatever your pleasure is.
I move that we approve the bids, contracts, and agreements under 6.03 and 6.09.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Dr. Daniels. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0, and we note for the record that Mr. Poland has abstained from discussion and voting. Item seven, another action item, first one, 7.01, deals with a bond resolution for the first issuance, it's the next step in the process of issuing our bonds from the recent bond approval. One note for the board's information, that we have representatives from Springstead, Mr. Tom Calico, and Gilmore and Bell, our legal counsel, Mr. Al Wilkins are here, if we have any questions for them, and Mr. Deener is also available. This is a form of resolution that we have seen before. If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion from someone pleased to approve it as presented.
So moved to approve the bond finance resolution authorizing the public sale of $50 million, principal amount of general obligation school bonds, Series 2008A of Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, and authorizing certain other actions relating to the bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Poland, any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0, 7.02 relates to full-day kindergarten, and I've asked Dr. All if she'd make some introductory remarks on this item before we begin.
I obviously have been responding to some individual board member questions on this particular topic. One of the things that I would like to just say in framing this, that we're very open to any discussion tonight on any of those options that you might have, so we're prepared to address those, but I'd also like to let you know that I believe we may need to delay action on this item, at least until the February board meeting, and I think that still puts it in appropriate time range, because kindergarten enrollment is not until late March. I think a couple of things that I would like to spend a little more time, based on some And I think some, you know, I'm, I think sometimes equity is not what we have to think about.
You know, it's interesting, No Child Left Behind and AYP is all about equity, in my opinion, in terms of making sure all students learn, something this district's been about for ever. But yet, we go down to a minimal number of students and we go by school buildings where you have to apply inequitable resources in order to meet those requirements. And I think that's an example of what you just talked about, Dr. Daniels. We really, it's not a matter of spreading the resources equally. It's a matter of putting them where they're needed to make sure we continue to make that progress and meet those standards.
Well, we can tie it to No Child Left Behind, but I think we can also tie it to our own morals and if we intend to provide equitable services and educational opportunities to all children. And we can't do that if we don't intend to do some things differentially.
Good. Well, it appears to be consensus we're not going to take any action tonight, but we, I know Dr. All's been bombarded with questions from all of us. So we'll allow staff additional time to work on this, and thank you, Dr. All and Mr. Martin and everyone who's had input in the process.
And just one more comment in this regard, to the, to the principals and to the teachers in those schools. I don't think, I know I couldn't do it, and I know a young kindergarten comes in the morning and, or comes in the afternoon, and the teacher looks at them and says, that child needs to be here all day. But the decision was made that the parents can't afford for the child to be here all day, and it just breaks the teacher's heart, and it probably breaks the principal's heart and when they know that that child needs those services. So the message to the, to the teachers and to the staffs is that this board is taking this very seriously, and we understand the implications here financially to these families, and we want to make a decision that does not circumvent the education of any child. So please bear with us and let us work on this, and working together, we'll find a solution that's going to be in the best interest of all these children.
Well said, Mr. Parker. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item seven dot zero three regarding the naming of Elementary School Number 34.
This will be a little easier.
As you can see, we have a variety of choices in front of us. We've got a recommendation from the staff to name it Forest View, which I think is very appropriate. And unless there's questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I think that sounds like an excellent choice, since that's the one we've been using for several months. So I move that we name Elementary School Number 34 Forest View Elementary School.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Mr. Churchman. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. That concludes all of our action items for tonight, board. You'll also note, we do not have an executive session, but we do have a study session. We have item eight, dealing with future action items. So I'd like to take an opportunity to ask if there's anything on the future action item agenda that you might have questions that staff could work on or Dr. All could respond to prior to our next meeting.
Mr. Gilmore, just like to talk briefly about eight dot zero three, and it's just a point to the board for reflection as we go through and study this more, but to me, it's not a matter of, are we going to do this? It's just a matter of, let's just figure out where to get this minimal amount of money that we need to keep this program going.
I'm in complete agreement.
Totally.
My only comment was tell the staff to find the money.
We got the money for it.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman, for that comment. Anything else? How about on item nine, information written item, dealing with Classified Employee Evaluation System? Any further questions or comments on that item? It's a matter of information. If not, we'll move to section 10, our study session. Oh, Dr. All, go ahead.
I'd like to take just a moment on that Classified Employee Evaluation System and recognize Dr. Letcher's work in coming to the district. He's been here a little over two years, and this was one of the projects that he took on in leadership with others to upgrade our evaluation system for our support staff that hadn't been touched probably in several decades. And so this has been a work in progress, our implementation of it. I imagine there will be things that we come back and, and work on after we've gone through a full year of that process. But I do want to just publicly commend him for his leadership on this and moving it forward.
Great, thank you, Dr. All. Thank you, Dr. Letcher. We really appreciate that. All right, under our board study session is our last item of business tonight, and Dr. Bev Graham is going to help facilitate this process once again. See if you can get these seven people moving in the right direction.
We're going to try.
Welcome, Dr. Graham. I know you're going to prevent, provide some initial information, and then we'll have discussion from there.
Absolutely. Well, tonight, we want to follow up on our discussion about board goals and our processes that we started on December 6th, the last board meeting. Our goal that night was to attempt to-
We need, we need you to get closer to that mic. There you go.
Now, can you hear me?
No.
No?
Can you, someone help her turn that up? Ron, can you help her there? I think it's a little, we might need it turned up just a bit, too, if we could.
What about now?
That's much better.
Much better. Okay. So our goal that last meeting was to attempt to look at all the work that you've done in your retreats and in your previous study sessions and put it together to see if we could map out what our governance process looks like in comparison to some national criteria and see if there were any goals or projects that the board wanted to focus on over the next year or so. So we ended up looking at three objectives and focused on those three that night. And I'm going to review them really quickly and then get to that discussion. Our first objective was to review the school district's governance model using best practices criteria from the National School Board Association and the Center for Public Education. And if you're looking, I know you have a lot of handouts. If you look, you have one handout that's stapled that called the Governance Model Review Criteria that just talks about those eight criteria that the National School Board Association focuses on for governance. And those are the board setting the vision, setting clear standards, establishing accountability processes, assuring that resources are aligned to meet student needs, creating a positive climate for student success, building collaborative relationships with political and business leaders to make sure student success is a top community priority, and continuous improvement, that focusing and commitment to continuous improvement. So what I did is I took our strategic planning process and our model we've been working on and tried to align those eight criteria up with that process. And you'll see that in the big, the legal-sized worksheet that you have. That looks at the front page, the vision and our, our strategic directions and our objectives. And the second page takes it a little further. And, and what, what I found in my analysis, and we'll have, you have your input on that, was that there was really only one area, and that was the building collaborative relationships with political and business leaders to make sure student success is a top community priority. Not that we don't do that. I think we are doing that. But when I was looking at it in an objective perspective as an evaluator, I couldn't find a lot of measures or a clear documented strategy on how we do that and how we would know if we're successful. So, so that was the gap that I found in that. So the follow-up question really for tonight is, are you satisfied that the governance model meets the criteria? And that, are there any gaps that you feel that we should address in the near future? The second objective looked at potential work projects that came from your retreat held on September 25th at the planning session. And there were two projects that came out of that recommendation paper, including proposing and implementing a set of meeting principles and developing a handbook or leadership guide of operations for the board to create an environment whereby other community members can step into this role and see what it's about. And I think that came from Mr. Parker. So what those two projects, the question would be then in looking at those, should either of these be addressed by the board? Or are there other priority projects that should be considered that didn't come up in that retreat in those final recommendations? The third objective really looked at the big picture. And my goal was to take some of the work that you had done in a previous study session where you aligned all of the priorities. And if you look in your handouts again, it would be the sheet that has the table on it, and list out then the priorities that came from your work-study sessions. If you remember right, you also took a survey where you prioritized and ranked those priorities as to what was most important as ranked as number one and what was least important ranked at number 10 under our five strategic directions. So what I did was took your, took your previous work, went to our current strategic plan and looked at the strategies that we have in place and said, can I find evidence that your priorities are being addressed by the strategic plan? And overall, the majority of them were being addressed, except for three. Again, not that they're not being addressed, but I couldn't find evidence of. One being expanding the definition of community to the state of Kansas and surrounding areas. And that's more of a principle, but it also aligns with that first governance model gap that came about from the National School Board Association as far as building those collaborative relationships with our political leaders and business members. The second gap, maintaining a respectful climate during the board meeting, really aligns with project one, it seemed to me, where we were talking about making sure that those principles were in place and when new board members came in, they understood the principles, the meeting principles. And then also educating people on how to approach the board administrators and teachers really aligned with project number two, when you talked about how do we get out there and teach the community what it's like to step in a board member's shoes. So in summary, there were three basic questions as follow-up that we would look at tonight. Are there any gaps in the board governance policy, the board governance model? Are you satisfied that the model meets the objectives? Should either of those two board projects be addressed? Or are there other priority projects that should be considered? And are there any board priorities that are not being addressed in the strategic plan? Now, one thing to keep in mind, this is a preliminary review of are your priorities addressed in the strategic plan? If you remember right, on our cyclical process this year, you hear each of the directions every other month. So you've heard student learning, you've heard resource allocation and acquisition. There are three other strategic directions that you're going to hear about throughout the year. As of May 1, you'll hear, you'll hear the whole entire strategic plan. You'll see all the performance measures aligned with it. And so this is kind of an ongoing thing of, here's what the alignment looks like so far, but as you hear more about the plan, there may be focus areas that come up. And if you remember, our cyclical process is set up, so we revise the plan each June, and it starts over July 1. So that gives a lot, a lot of opportunity for feedback and reviewing those gaps. So there's a worksheet that I handed to you to kind of summarize then those three questions of what are the two things that you might want to discuss tonight? And one of them is the governance model. And this just talks about if there was a gap in the governance model, if collaboration looked like a gap to you and if you wanted to address it. This is just a starting point of who would, who would be assigned to address that? Are there other people you think should be in a committee to work on that? Whether that be staff or outside public members? When would it be completed? And what I did is like give you an example, I just gave you some examples of who might be included in that first one and what type of objective milestones might happen out of that. And that was based off the National School Board Association's focus on what collaboration meant. And then below that are the potential board projects, the two that listed that came from your retreat and then also open-ended, is there any other projects? So I guess I would open it up to you at that point for those two areas and anything else that you feel that we've missed.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Graham. In order to give direction here, board, what, what we'd like to do on this action plan is, first of all, affirm that the, for instance, the governance model review and then those two projects in the bottom section is something we do want to pursue. And assuming it is something we want to pursue, and I believe it is based on our previous discussions, we need to put some study committees together to deal with those. We'll have two board members serve on as leaders of the project or leaders of one of the three or maybe more than one, I guess. And we'll need to kind of share that responsibility among the seven of us. And then I think as, as the two board members decide which one you want to be on, meet together to decide whether our staff, other committee members, other people do we want involved in the process and set up a projected completion date and report that back. So I think the first step in this process, Dr. Graham, is for board members to respond, I guess, to me on what their interest is in these various three projects that we've got listed here. And from that point, we can put together the committees and then do the work. I think that's the last piece we're missing, is just doing the work to complete the gaps in our model and in our plan and our priorities, and then we move on from there. I mean, that sounds pretty simple, but I think that's where we are.
So just some thoughts back, Mr. Gilmore, on the governance model gap or potential. We're looking once again for evidence and where we can improve that. I think we do have some good evidence opportunities there to document. One would be our legislative positions. To me, that's certainly an example of where we have that relationship with the, the political community. So maybe it's taking it a bit further and saying, how is it that we would then list the success of that at the end of each legislative session? And then if I look at some other examples where we tie in with the business leaders, we have the regular yearly, sometimes twice yearly, meeting with the city council and then also the once-a-year meeting with the State Board of Education. I think those are opportunities to document evidence. I think we, we could improve documenting what the results of those sessions are at the end of the year is maybe a way to further shore that up.
Yeah, and I think a missing component there, Mr. Churchman, is also, I think, better documenting the interactions that happen between all those official times, if you will. You know, the one meeting a year where we have all the legislators in to hear our agenda is a necessary thing, but it needs to be a lot more than that. And I think we need to put a plan together that documents how we do that, the interaction of the board officers, the interaction of all of us. I don't know exactly how to do that. That's what I'd like the committees to study a little bit, the subcommittees to look at and say, how do we do this better? Come back with those ideas, and we can all look at them collectively.
And the National School Board Association gave four, three major questions that may help guide that. How do we identify key business and political leaders in our community? What processes do we use to inform these key leaders of our standards and progress toward them? How do we support those leaders? And how do we, how do we recognize the contributions that these leaders make to our educational goals? So that were their three guiding questions in developing that type of strategy.
I think there's a lot of good work we can do here. I just don't think we want to do it with seven of us. I think we need to break it down, as we've done some other things, and then bring that back to the full board, whether it's all at one time or in three pieces, it doesn't matter. But I think they'll get better addressed if we break it down in smaller chunks. So we don't, and we don't necessarily need to line everybody up here tonight. I just need you all to respond. Maybe you can drop me an email or a note and let me know if there's one or more of these that you have an interest in. And then we could, I could, for the next meeting, we could recommend some committee structure and we could bless that and move forward on it. Mr. Parker?
I was going to volunteer to be part of the group, the two board members for number three. Seems how that was my idea to start with, so. And I have some interest in it. I really liked number one, too, but in the interest of time, I just, I couldn't serve, do a good job for both. But I'd be glad to participate with staff on number three.
I would help, Mr. Parker, on that one.
All right, thank you, Dr. Daniels.
I'll do number one.
Boy, this is going to get easy.
And number one would be a lot of fun. I mean, you know, when I think about this, being on this board for eight years, you know, I can't ever remember a time when we sit down as a board and with a bunch, with a group of key business leaders in the community and talk to them about the school. I know we do at the foundation breakfast, but just as a board bringing in, so that's, so we could have, where there's a lot of opportunity that we could do with that.
And I was going to recommend, and Ms. Ashley beat me to the punch, that the board officers take that first one and work with Dr. All and the staff. So I'll volunteer my name on that one. So that leaves us the project two regarding meeting principles, if there's anyone that has an interest there. And again, we might decide that that's not something we want to address. I mean, that's okay, too. It was just, you know, it was lower on the priority list.
I kind of think we could put, incorporate that into number three. That would be a part of that and, because that's part of board protocol and learning about board business and, and how the board operates. So that would certainly, I think, we could incorporate that in number three.
That works for me. All right, so we've got some volunteers to head these subcommittees up, so then now it's a matter of sitting down and scheduling our planning and work.
Yeah, is, who's going to be the staff liaison and who's going to lead the process?
I'm going to respond to that.
Until I think further, it'll probably be me. I mean, as far as working, whoever the two people are to kind of set that up. And then if there's, I think on the Leadership Guide of Operations, I can be a resource for the two. You identify who else you think need to be involved, and then if you say, well, we need a couple of staff members here, and I'll give some thought to that, but I would, you know, would provide you the staff that you needed on any aspect of the organization.
I would suggest the first meeting would probably be with Dr. All to determine what other staff involvement would be needed there and kind of brainstorm on that first.
So then, then, Dr. All, you'd call the first meeting then?
I can, I can help, yeah, I can help facilitate calling your meeting.
All right, good.
Okay. Great, thank you, Dr. Graham. Along those lines, is there anything we want to add to this project list? Something we haven't talked about, or maybe you've had an aha moment since we started? Mrs. Wilhelm?
I remember us in two different surveys, something that the board was asked to address or at least ask us to reflect on was our ability to communicate with the public in how, you know, about the happenings of the board, et cetera. And maybe that's being done somewhere, and I'm just not seeing that. But I know that's something that we had talked about, is we know what percentage watch the board meetings. We know that, and maybe that's not a concern for us any longer.
I remember, that resonates with me because we discussed that loud and clear. How do we continue communicating with the community as it continues to grow? And what avenues, and so it certainly would seem to be a project that we need to do. And that's certainly something that comes up on our survey on a regular basis, how we, how we communicate and how we get the message out. And I think that's something that deserves a project.
Do you think maybe our efforts toward promoting and educating our community for the upcoming bond issue would not be a hands-on opportunity? We could look at different ways that we are going to communicate that message to the public, and that would be just a very specific way of implementing our efforts to communicate with the folks out there, our taxpayers.
That would certainly be a strong trial run for us, an important one.
And I'm talking about a multifaceted communication plan. And I'm talking about a multifaceted communication plan, not just going out with meetings, but the website, and written and electronic communication, perhaps we can even develop a CD that could be available to people, I mean, whatever we can do to communicate with people.
I think one thing you might consider, too, this board, current board, has made a significant commitment of time of attending psych council meetings. Remembering your earlier kind of action plans, your steps were to be available, visible, you're out for programs, and whatever. And I don't know that we have, we can, we can document certain things, but I think that the board has stepped up to address some of the survey results that the community, you can't be everywhere, because you have full-time jobs, but I think this board makes a big effort to be as many place to represent and support students and staff. And, you know, maybe a couple of board members working on this could look at how we could better provide evidence of that, maybe look at some gaps, and promote that more in terms of, maybe there's some stakeholders in the community that could be improved. So, I mean, I think you've been working on that, and it may just be, take a little extra fine-tuning to make that really a nice piece for the board.
So, I want to make sure we're all on the same page. Did I hear that there's potential for that kind of a project, but we want to kind of wait and see? Maybe let the communication piece on the bond issue drive that process to begin with? Am I hearing that? Want to make sure I'm not skipping over something. And Mrs. Wilhelm, you brought it up, I would, is that satisfactory to your query, or do you think we should go ahead and form some kind of a communications subcommittee, and start working on it alongside of all this?
I guess I would have to go back and ask the rest of the board members. I just know twice in surveys, that it has been something that has asked, and whether information about what the board typically does at board meetings, you know, it's a very small percentage of the community, unless it's reported in the newspaper, who's really aware of some of the information. That usually comes out in either boundary changes, is when there's a larger interest in that, you know, certainly, or some of those major changes. So, I think it has to, I will go back to the board and ask if that's a priority, or if that's something that you feel is still a need, then maybe that's something that needs to be put on as a project. Certainly, the bond, you know, going back and asking for that, it's going to be very focused, and that focus will definitely be on educating about six-nine, reconfiguration, the need for. So, it will be a very focused piece. And so, maybe that is where we start, and then decide how successful, and what avenues did we use as communication, that might be future avenues. And I think that's what Rita was probably saying. So, I'm comfortable with that.
Maybe I'll help. Go ahead, Mr. Pollan.
Well, if I remember from Dr. All's presentation tonight, that's, there's going to be a lot of effort put into that by staff, developing that. Maybe a board member be a part of that team, and maybe somehow we develop an evaluation tool to see the effectiveness of, you know, of our communication, because it sounds like we've already got a project going, or it's going to be going. And so, maybe, you know, we couple onto that and find a way of using that tool to get feedback.
You know, I think in the communication plan, you know, and that was skeletal that outlined, I think it's going to be very important for board presence, participation, particularly with the community kinds of events. I mean, the board's the elected representatives of this community, it involves significant change. And so, I think there's going to be many opportunities, and I would welcome board participation to help us educate and promote this. And then, there are probably going to be other things, you know, there's still the rest of the world going on. And so, there's other issues and opportunities for board visibility and connections. But I think there's going to be plenty of opportunities this year. I don't think you're going to be without opportunities. It's just, how do you want to structure it, or how do you want to document it, or, you know, what do you want to learn from it? I mean, it's pretty generic.
So, I think to try to answer this question, I'm going to throw it out this way. If board communication is going to be taken on as a project, and that's a pretty broad term, we'll need some volunteers to head up a subcommittee, and if two of you step forward, it's yours.
I will be.
All right, Mrs. Wilhelm? I'll help her. Mr. Pollan? Okay, great. Then we've got four projects.
No.
Wonderful. Anything else? Any other items we may have missed?
It's only 8:17.
You want to sit around, you want to sit around and look at each other for a while? Thank you all for your great input and questions and comments tonight, and thank you, staff and Dr. All. And believe it or not, at 8:18, we are adjourned.